Okay, welcome everyone. It is Tuesday, June 5th, 2018. This is the Village of North Hudson Regular Board of Trustees Meeting. We'll call the meeting to order, and I've got a short invocation for us tonight. Father, humble our hearts so that we will hear your voice. Help us as a nation to obey your voice in all that you say and do. Continue to bless us, the Lord, and give us a compassionate giving heart toward those around us. Hold us to a higher calling that we will carefully observe your commandments and be a nation under God with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Trustee Lee?
Here.
Matts?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Pike?
Here.
President Weckin?
Here.
Trustee Zeiss?
Here.
Zappa?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, item two, review and approved minutes from the regular board meeting of one May Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there any discussions, corrections, or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, item three, comments from the floor. This is an opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, opportunities either on or not on today's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring up something to the attention of the board? I think everybody else is on the agenda, so I will proceed to item four. Resolution 2018-03, Department of Natural Resources Review of Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, the CMAR Annual Report, approval requested.
And may I move to approve resolution number 2018-03?
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. And just an FYI, this is just an annual thing. Patrick in the DNR here is...
Nathan.
Huh?
Nathan.
Nathan filled out the paperwork for this and everything came back fine, so all... Let's see, resolution... Everybody in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, welcome from 2018, 2019, Class A/B Alcohol Beverage Licenses, Cigarette Licenses, and Amusement Permits, approval requested.
And may I move to approve all alcohol, tobacco, and coin-operated amusement license renewals as stated on the June 5th, 2018 memo from the village clerk.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there any comments, questions? Hearing none?
Stan, I'll sustain from this vote, just to make sure.
Okay, thank you, Kurt. Part of the...
Are you recording? Are you recording?
Okay, all in favor of the licenses as a motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Six, 2018, 2019 Fireworks Permit Application of Mark Zappa of Exit One Fireworks, approval requested.
Stan, can I move to approve the application for a fireworks paraphernalia license, temporary use permit for Mark Zappa with the following inclusions? No smoking signs must be displayed, fire extinguishers available, no fireworks sold to persons under 18 years of age, operation not to exceed 180 days per calendar year.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kurt. Is there any questions, comments?
How many years have you been doing this for?
About 15.
Okay, anything else? We've never had an incident. Okay, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the fireworks permit for application of Mark Zappa Exit One Fireworks, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Stan, I'll abstain.
Thank you, Mark. Motion carries. Amended Class Perrin B/ Perrin Class B Liquor License for Extended Premise Seasons Tavern, Saturday, August 18th, 2018, approval requested.
And may I move approval of the amended use license for Seasons Tavern with the conditions stated on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kurt. Questions or comments?
Is that Pepper Festival?
This is the Pepper Festival Parade Day Extension that just parade runs right in front of the place. It's a fun place to be on Pepper Festival Saturday. Okay, all in favor of the amended Class B Perrin Class B Liquor License for Seasons, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone. New business from the board of staff. The only thing in president's comments, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Father's Day and hope they have a wonderful month and a safe Fourth of July because we won't meet until after the fireworks. Melissa?
The only thing I have is just for information, the village received a $500 safety grant from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance Company, and with that, they will reimburse the village for 75% of our purchases up to our $500 grant limit. So with that, we were able to purchase a couple of items for each department, the police department, public works, and general government, for a very low cost.
Excellent. Did we have to apply for that?
No, we did not. We got it based on our workers' comp audits that come back.
Okay, I got re-miked here all of a sudden. I thought my voice carried good enough for this group, but I guess it's TV people. Okay, anything else?
No.
Thank you very much, and that's always good news to get money that we can use to help our departments out. Okay, moment we've all been waiting for, Plan Commission Recommendations. Mike, would you care to give us a chair update?
Plan Commission had a very busy meeting. We had three public hearings. They're on your agenda tonight, so I'll ask you how you'd like me to handle them. I can just give you a briefing of what we did and then let them get into the details. I can do one at a time or I can do all three now.
Let's, because I did with... I'm not going to have these guys do the whole presentation that they did the other night. We discussed that earlier and, you know, I mean, I'm very confident in our Plan Commission that has looked over this, so if you just want to pick them...
I'll just start with the first one.
Yep, and then we can go from there.
The first public hearing was an application to construct a QuickTrip convenience store with a car wash, one bay car wash at the northeast corner of North End Road. We had a public hearing and nobody in the public spoke. Nobody had any concerns.
Neither for or against?
Correct. Yeah, nobody even spoke, so it was a very short public part of it. It's, as you see on your minutes there, we approved it... We had all but one member there and our vote was unanimous of the members there with the following conditions, and instead of reading them, I'll just, unless you want me to, but...
Yeah, well, the conditions are what the board should be, you know what I mean? That's the one thing that we want to make sure that we're voting on is the commissioner, the conditional use, so if you'd go through there...
Sure, sure. That all the operations comply with federal and state guidelines, local ordinances, and the fire codes. Two A, all conditions are stated in the memo, the May 9th memo from the village engineer, including parking spaces shall be a minimum of 10 feet wide by 19 feet long. The original proposal was slightly different. My understanding is they made some corrections on that that they needed. Kevin can verify that. The proposed retaining wall will require a permit from the building inspector, provide a copy of the approved traffic impact analysis. That is, of course, one thing we talked about, it's on the main street and there'll be extra traffic. Lots one and two should be combined into one parcel through a new certified survey map. There are existing ponding easements showing on the ALTA survey that will need to be released, provide copies of these executed documents. Wisconsin Department of Transportation is requiring a new driveway access permit for the shared driveway with Mama Maria's, and I think the bank might even use that, too. So they're going to provide a copy of that approved permit to the village. All the signs shall be according to our code, and stamp of approval and copy of the approved plans from the State Department of Commerce, approved by the building inspector, and all their applicable governing agencies shall be obtained prior to commencing any construction. And it was pretty straightforward. A lot of talk about the stormwater and the ponding and everything as a contained system. It sounded very good.
And engineering, Kevin is... Everything is... You approve everything so far as they've come through with, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, let's see.
The retaining wall's not ours?
No, it's all private property.
And this ponding, it's not a mosquito-type place?
Theirs is going to be underground?
Correct.
Under the parking?
Under.
Yes.
Okay.
After he's done, are you going to have them come up and do the presentation, like a short?
Yeah, I'll have them do it. Give a short...
Just to get all the questions up there.
They can answer, you know, the questions that permit. Now, we're going to discuss the term. So, let's see, so is there questions, any from the board?
Stan, I thought I read some place was concerned about a fire access, fire truck access at some road or something, one of the minutes I read. Was that ever brought up at all?
That, I think that one is more concerned with the development than with the charts part of it. We'll hear about that, I'm sure.
Just so you know, we're working on that. QuickTrip and Gerard have been talking, and there's some drafts floating back and forth as far as that's concerned. I spoke with the gentleman a little before the meeting on that, too.
Thank you.
They're working on it.
Okay. And now, we've got an item three, or item three in that list, Mike, is the constructive right turn lane traveling north on 35 to North End Road, deemed necessary by Public Works Committee or approved villages, Public Works taking that up?
This month.
Not yet? This month, okay, that's on the end of there, so number three we won't worry about today. How about the install fence on top of the retaining wall, is on there?
In your motion, it should include all of those.
Okay. Okay. All right, so I guess when we've got background information, should we have a motion and a second to...
So the right turn thing?
The right turn thing is that...
We can deal with that later.
Later. Yeah, you guys got to talk about that.
Well, the reason I'm... If they're doing a right turn lane, is this what we were talking about with the 35 project the other day? Because they're putting...
Actually, yeah.
Okay, because they're putting left turn lanes in, or so-called left turns, right at Summers that way. So would this just extend?
No, that'd be in front of all the businesses, so...
Yeah, he should go up because the TV can't see him there.
Yeah.
So, we had a meeting with the DOT here about a week ago, I would say. They're actually looking at doing some improvements in between Summers Road and North End Road. There's been some crashes in that particular area, so they're going to apply for some safety money. They're looking at widening that out about six feet on each side, so there'd be two exclusively left turn lanes, like a twiddle lane, they call it, for those turning movements, so you'd still have through traffic going northbound and southbound. We're trying to tie this all in to what's being proposed with the QuickTrip improvements. Probably going to be some more, obviously more discussions about all that. It's part of the TIA that's being looked at by the DOT and is, you know, eventually you're going to have to approve that to get their work on right away, an access permit. Right now, it's just slated for to have an exclusive left turn lane from going southbound into North End Road. Based on what the DOT is, they kind of, they want us to explore an exclusive right turn lane heading northbound. What that does is there's a driveway just south of North End Road. Obviously, if we do want to move forward with the exclusive right turn lane, they're looking at potentially closing that access point down, just because it's, you know, it's going to be a safety issue for somebody trying to get out of that driveway, going across the right turn lane, and then potentially having an additional lane in the middle. It's going to get really congested into that particular area. So, we just put a condition in there, not knowing if the village is going to want to move forward with that, just to have it in here in our conditional use permit. So that's going to be something future.
Okay.
So we're looking at talking about that at the next Public Works meeting.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions, comments from...
Are you going to have the QuickTrip person speak about it?
Yes, yep.
Fair enough.
I was going to say, we should have a motion in a second in order to...
Oh.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. And so, let's have somebody from QuickTrip. If you...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the city council, village board, I guess it is. My name's Scott Tagg, and I'm a vice president with the QuickTrip stores. I've worked with the owner of QuickTrip since 1974, when we had 20 stores, and now we're at about 645, so you see I've been around a while. I'll give you a little background about QuickTrip. We're headquartered out of La Crosse. Started as a sister company from Gateway Foods, which is a grocery distribution company, so we come into this business from the food end of it more so than the gas end of it, which most convenience stores come into it from the gas end. We're the most vertically integrated convenience store chain in the United States. We have our own dairy plant. The milk from, that's coming out of the cows right now will be in our dairy plant tomorrow morning and in our stores tomorrow night. Nobody can put milk that fresh into their stores as we can. We have our own bakery. We're just now doubling the size of our bakery, and because we've got that little glazer donut that is a yeast-raised product, you can't freeze it, we deliver to our stores every day, and we sell over a million donuts of those a week. They're very low calorie, at least that center part.
That holds the bill, that's for sure. I don't blame all that.
We also have our own commissary, make our own pizza sandwiches, do all of our own We were very, very food-oriented. You still got to have gas, but we focus a lot of attention on the inside of the store, and we will serve on the north end of Hudson here as a grocery store, and we'll do a good job of it. We have about 21,000 coworkers as we speak. We're a little different than most companies in that we don't pay anybody minimum wage. Everybody's above minimum wage. There should be approximately 30 jobs, half full-time, half part-time with our operation. And the company instituted this back in 1984. We share 20%, or 40% of the profit that the company makes with everybody. It's not store by store, it's one company, one team, and so that's why our coworkers are a little bit different in the store, is because they consider themselves part-owner of that business. So that's why they'll always greet you and why they'll always tell you, "See you next time." That's probably enough about QuickTrip. I could go on a long time if I'm on TV. I didn't know I was going to be on TV, so I had to prepare this.
Yeah, no, I mean...
But anyway, we've agreed with Gerard's on the emergency exit easement out from our property. That's no problem at all, and we... QuickTrip does not want to be the bad guy taking somebody's driveway away. Kevin talked about that. I don't know if there's a need for a right turn lane, you know, there's people a lot smarter than me that make those decisions, but I want to go on record that QuickTrip's not in favor of taking this party's driveway away. We are in agreement to pay for everything that our track, the improvements that our traffic study is recommending, which is the expensive one, the middle turn lane.
Exactly.
So I've got Nate the engineer, and he's the one that does all the work, so you can go ahead and fire away.
Okay, questions?
Why North Hudson?
Why North Hudson? I've been looking... I actually live in Glenwood City, so I'm up here a lot. I've been looking at North Hudson for a long time, and I was kind of zeroed in on this spot and the other spot where you had a little neighborhood issue a few years ago. So I was kind of looking at those, and Melissa says, "Don't even look at that." So, I zeroed in over here, and wouldn't you know it, the Gerards are zeroing in at the same time, but, you know, it's a good, it's a good community, and we should have been here, we should have been here before this.
So I did hear from some folks. I know they might not have attended the Plan Commission meeting, but I've heard from some constituents, both for and against, and one of their concerns against is that this is a couple blocks from another gas station. So they were, they were wondering what your philosophy was on, to pair off his question, why North Hudson, so, you know, 20 pumps, a lot of pumps, there's a gas station down the street, so give me your pitch.
The Freedom Store is owned by a company much even larger than we are, remotely owned. We are very community-oriented, and when people come in to ask us for donation, if it's for a right cause, we'll always step in and help. We'll be way more involved with this, with this community than your new owners. Now, I mean, I knew Dave Erickson very well, and he was a good friend of mine, and he's hard to beat, but we'll be as good as Dave. We just, we just think that there's a need on this end of town for the food, and I'm talking about the groceries, and we have the fast food, too, but we're not going to put the Freedom Store out of state, out of business, so...
Based off that answer, then, being the park board director, are you guys in other communities, help them out or part of that?
Just about. We all turn a few down, but we don't turn many down. We got only a limited amount of money, you know, so if you come and say we want a million dollars for a new park, you know, there's always a limit. But we'll, if it's a good cause, we'll generally be part of it. If the community is behind it, we'll be part of the community.
Excellent. Anyone else?
So it's a good car wash?
It's the best car wash. It better be for what we pay for these things. I'm always giving nade heck, I said, "Do we have to spend that much money?" But it's a, and you get the choice of soft touch or touchless. You can decide that when you go into wash, and, I mean, our car washes are second to none. They're excellent.
What's the timing? I guess in all the documents, I didn't really actually see a timeline for if it were approved, how quickly it would be up and running.
This, we've got this store on our 2019 schedule.
Okay.
Okay.
And I hope we can keep it there.
And we have, you know, the nice, you can show the pictures of what...
Well, everybody always likes to see what the sign is.
Yeah, and make sure the mic's toward you, because I guess that's...
This is, this is a depiction of this, of this particular store. Shows our sign, the gas canopy. These letters will be backlit at night. Gorgeous store, and the car wash door comes out here. It's attached in the back of the building. This is Mama Maria's on the backside. And I have, I have talked with Gary Lammers, and I've talked with the bank. We've got some easement issues that we're all sharing in, and Gary's only issue with us coming here was some parking, so the parking that you see on the back property line is designed for his coworkers, coworkers. I mean, it will be shared parking, you know, and, but that, we're sensitive to...
Good neighbors.
Well, we try to be.
Sounds like you want to be good neighbors.
His customers will be our customers. His coworkers are our customers.
Right. Exactly. Okay.
This is our building, nothing too magic about that. You've all seen them. We're very excited to be in North Hudson, and we appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I just have one comment. If conditional use permits lapse of six months if construction hasn't started, so since they're not starting in 2019, on your motion, if you could please include that, an extension of the conditional use permit.
Would it be possible to do two years?
She said six months.
They lapse in six months, so you would need to do some kind of an extension to it, so...
So how long of an extension do you think?
Six months puts us in December, so, I mean, and they're starting probably not until spring of 19, so...
From the date it's approved, right.
So can we just stay through the end of 2019? Can we say something?
I believe that's, is that okay?
That would be out of danger.
That's for a start.
Right.
I'll move to amend the motion to extend the conditional use permit through 2019.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing, and since this is a conditional use and permit for buildings, Kathy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next one is BNC's C, conditional use. Permit of Gerard Companies, Gerard Development LLC to construct new residential development consisting of one, two, and three-bedroom unit apartments southeast of Cradley Lane and State Highway 35, pin numbers 161-1063-40100, 161-1063-40000, and 161-1063-20-000. Discussion and approval requested. Okay, Mike, you want to give us a little...
One thing I neglected to say...
Quick one on that, and then we'll let the Gerards know that you're ready for it.
I neglected to say on the last one is they had a very well-prepared package, and it had a lot of the information we needed. The reason I say that is this one also was like that. Well, we've had some doozies where they come in and not, everything's been thought out, so it really helps us a lot to do it. This was also a public hearing, and we did have three citizens speak. The first question was about how West Cap would be verifying the income, and West Cap Community Action, one of our Plan Commission members works with them, and she was very excited about this project, that it's for moderate and lower income in some cases of who will be living in these units. And so, the questioner's question about verifying the income, and yes, it's verified, and she was happy with that, and she was also asking about snow removal. So that's not pushed up where you can't get out, but no, it'll be pushed into sedimentation ponds, so that was good. Second person asked about drainage pond because she was having some problems with water running across her yard and everything, and Kevin confirmed, too, that this would improve drainage for the residents on Lund Street, so that was a good thing. She also asked if there would be an onsite property manager who'd be available 24/7 if there were concerns or problems, because I think she has something to do with some of the public housing in Hudson, and they've had some problems where they call the police right away if something happens. It's nice to have a manager, so that was a question that came up. And the third person just asked about more fencing and barriers in addition to trees for privacy. One good thing we heard about the privacy was the back end of the building facing the Lund people have no back entrances, so people won't be walking out their doors, so that's, that sounded pretty good. We discussed things, probably the biggest thing we talked about was just the aesthetics of some of the building. As you know, one of our members is an architect and comes up with some good questions. Just a long building that it had to break up into sightlines and things, and so we discussed that quite a bit, and they were looking at some things. Otherwise, we, again unanimously approved it with the following conditions. There's a lot of them, so motion to approve, all those numbers you read. All operations shall comply with federal, state regulations, local ordinances, fire control, fire codes. All condition in the village engineer's letter from May 9th, including parking spaces to be a minimum of 10 by 19, same as the other one. Maximum amount of impervious area is 40% of the total lot area, and make sure that that's, information is provided on the plans. Building number two required a total of 38 parking stalls on the initial drawings. We had, there were only 31. I believe they have taken care of that, and you might hear about that later. D, the proposed retaining wall will require a permit from the building inspector. All of the existing parcels should be combined into one lot through a new CSM. There are existing ponding easements on ALTA survey that need to be released, provide copies of these documents, provide details about how the traffic will be restricted between this development and the QuickTrip. An access easement will need to be acquired from QuickTrip for this, provide copies of this document. Any lighting on the buildings will be downlight, cut off horizontal fixtures, which pretty much everyone does now, so there's less light pollution for the neighbors. Provide an erosion control plan. There's a park very close to this facility, so we requested the fee in lieu of parkland, dedication of $35,000. The existing water main on the western side of the properties outside of the existing utility easement, provide an additional easement to the east, a minimum of 15 feet east of the line to correct this. Stamp of approval and copy of the approved plan... of the approved plans from the State Department of Commerce, approval from the building inspector, and all other applicable governing agencies shall be obtained prior to commencing any construction. Trash enclosures shall be shown on the plan. Please include the location and type. Coordinate with the fire chief regarding his concern with the length of the driveway not having sufficient turnaround. I believe that's been addressed. You'll hear, you'll hear from that. All signs should be part of our municipal code. Determine if lighting on the roadway will be necessary. Submit a lighting drawing. I do not know the answer to that. And determine if a fence is necessary along the east side to deter excess light from headlights driving in and out of development. And I believe David addressed that also. Kevin, maybe you wanna come up. They're gonna have engineering questions.
Okay, and before we make any motions, I'm gonna let, uh, the Gerards, whoever wants to do the presentation, you know, come up. And again, uh, just let us know. Keep the mic in front of you because it's a portable if we're gonna do any pictures or anything over on the easel.
Certainly, certainly. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council of Village of North Hudson. I'm joined here tonight by my partner and brother, Peter Gerard. Um, Brad Corkbine is the architect and also the construction manager and Todd Erickson from Erickson Engineering. We heard some constructive criticism from our last presentation, so we tried to shorten this up a little bit. And mind you, um, some of the comments were very positive and we came back with some, uh, very positive comments and incorporated the architect's comments into the plan. So that was very well done. I just wanna say a couple of brief items. Gerard Development is a Wisconsin-based, uh, development, uh, developer. Um, we have, have built over two-hundred-and-fifty units in the St. Croix area over a twenty-five year span. We manage all of our units, uh, in those markets. And we have units from student housing in River Falls to elderly housing to market rate housing. To answer a couple of the quick questions, I did check with West Cap. They will have a property manager on location. They do have a twenty-four hour answering service, um, in case there's emergencies. I'm leaping ahead, Stan, because I know there's, some of those things are gonna come up. And, um, I, I, I think most importantly is we're not strangers at all to your community, this county, and the greater area. Um, we're currently working on three other projects up in this, up in this area. And I wanna try and keep my comments very short, but I did bring, um, a copy of the market study. I can leave it here. I did also bring a copy of our previous participation of all of our properties and projects that we've done state and, and, and gr, yeah, regionally, further than Wisconsin. We're as far as Western Montana. So with, with types of, of product. Um, so what I'd like to do to keep it short is invite, uh, Brad up to give you a brief architectural presentation. And then, and maybe, uh, Kevin and Todd can kinda play tag team on the site plan on some of the issues. So I'll keep it brief. So before I leave, does anyone have any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And I've just got, uh, my name is Brad Corkbine, Cornerstone Architects. I'm out of Toma area. I've worked with.
Give to the mic.
I've worked with the, uh, the Gerards.
You can take it out of the deal.
For quite a year, quite a few years.
Should've had two easels back.
We've got, we've got three buildings that will be part of this development. And we've taken the, uh, the comments from the architect. We've changed some of the, the elevation so that it includes a little bit more, uh, color variation, a little bit more of the, the texture changes so that we break up the backsides of these buildings so that it really is a, we're, we're trying to keep this so that it's a residential appearance, residential feel, because that's where we're at. We're, we're creating that buffer between the commercial and the, the highway and the single-family residential that's behind us. So you, as you can see, these are, uh, these are short buildings, just one story. We're not, uh, building anything very tall. Then we've got a, a second building that's in the middle that because of the, the elevation differences on the site, we're creating a situation where we've got on the backside, it's a single-story building on the front side toward Mama Maria's and the bank. And QuickTrip will have a two-story elevation. And, uh, we've broken that up. We've added a couple of, uh, gable end views. And, and when we do that, when we add those gables, we also add in there the, uh, the, the fish scale look on the shakes. Uh, again, it's just another color and texture that's, that's incorporated into the buildings to create a, a very nice, uh, appearance to the building. And then this is the, the, the third building. This is the one that's to the north. Uh, this one, again, because of the, the slope in the, in the grade, we've, we've stepped the building up in order to create the, the road so that it slopes down into the site. And, uh, and again, it, it just goes a long ways in creating some interest in the, in the elevations. Uh, one of the other comments, and I don't have a board for it, was the, the incorporation of the dumpster enclosure. We've got near the second building, between the second and third building, we've got a, a two-story parking garage that'll end up being on, on the building because of the slope. Um, we, we will stack those garages in order to get the, uh, parking that we need. Um, and on one end of that, we have the enclosure for the, the dumpsters. Uh, we keep that hidden so that it's, it's between the buildings and it's not, uh, something that's, uh, in a lot of view. Uh, but it's, it's an enclosing, enclosing structure so that, that we keep that all clean.
Bear proof?
We've been getting reports around here. I just wanted to say, we got bear proof or a bear feeding station.
Yeah. So, um, any other questions architecturally? I think we tried to, uh, to make a lot of, uh, of, of updates and, and adjustments, um, to provide a little bit more information to you than, than what we had, um, based on the.
No, it, it's good information now because, uh, obviously we didn't, the planning commission, we didn't get on, uh, televised, you know, so this is nice, uh, to let the neighbors and the rest of the village see what.
So two of them are residential and one of them is parking for the three buildings?
No, the, the three, three buildings are residential. And, and then there's a, a separate building that's for the, the parking. So actually, I guess you look at, at four buildings then.
Look, there's a, like, what, a parking garage kinda?
What it is, is it, it will look like a garage where we have, and unfortunately, I would have it on the PowerPoint, um, but we don't have that up. There's, you enter in from one side, there, down low, and then we'll have precast plank. And then you enter up, up high from the other direction. So it's, it's just a, it, one side, it'll look like it's a two-story garage. The other side, it, it's just one story. They made a joke at it at the planning commission that we're gonna be the first ones in the town that have a parking structure, so.
Our first parking ramp. How good is that? Oh, I can't wait to let the mayor know that one. Oh, Lord.
Tuck under garage.
Our parking problem solved.
Okay.
That's basically it.
Right, yes.
I'll pass this around. This is what Brad referring to right now. This is the structure right here.
So with that, I'll, uh, invite Todd up.
Evening. Todd Erickson, engineer for the project. Um, we, we did, uh, we went through and did a, um, pretty extensive revision of our site plan based on the planning commission comments and from, from the public comments as well. So we've incorporated a fence now along that, um, east, east border. So that we, so any, any lights that are gonna be, um, you know, heading in that direction will be stopped by that, that fence. So we're looking at a six-foot vinyl fence along that stretch. And it also is six feet above the existing grade, which will help too. So then, and we can, and, and we were able to move, jockey that away from the west or from the east property line too, so we could put, and space trees in there as well. So that's, that shouldn't add, add a nice, uh, border along that. I didn't, I, I thought we were gonna use a, a PowerPoint on it, but I didn't know if you, you've got it in front of you. But we, uh, just north of building two then, uh, we addressed the, uh, fire marshals issue by creating a, a turnaround, um, at that location. So that's, that, that small, um, tan building north of building two, that's actually the parking garage. So I can step away here and just identify that for you guys here. It's, it's this one here. So this, this is actually our, it's basically a tuck under garage.
How many, how many stalls are in that garage?
Uh, we've got five, five above and five below. So then, and then to the, just to the south of that, on the lower side is where we're gonna have the trash enclosure. So that'll be used one of the walls of that building. And, and actually, the, that, that garage, um, acts as a retaining wall as well. So there's a, there's a grade between those two that we, so we just incorporated that, that rear of that garage as a retaining wall essentially. So that'll work out well. So it's kinda dual purpose for that. And it, it allowed us to create a, um, a stacking area that, that'll allow for, um, for a good, um, you know, allow for the, the ten, ten stalls and actually reduces the footprint overall too. So it allows, so we don't have to, so we're trying to meet that requirement of the open space. The, um, we did also realign the, the road, uh, for, for the planning commission's recommendation, which allowed us to create more, um, more parking o, off street. So we, we had talked about putting on-street parking and widening the road, but it was, we, uh, talking to the engineer and the attorney that they wanted defined parking. So we've now presented that with defined parking for each building. It's all called out on, on the sheet two, um, or sheet three, rather, for the, uh, the layout plan that identifies that for, for this. Um, one of the other revisions that we did, um, the snow storage was brought up. We lengthened the end of the, the turnaround on the south to be able to push some snow at that location. And that'll allow snowplow to actually push snow into that, uh, that storage or that sedimentation pond at the south end. And that, that pond will hold water. It won't be a mosquito breeder at all. It's, it'll be, uh, and so we're six feet in depth right now, the way, the way it's designed. So that, that provides all of the stormwater treatment, uh, from the whole subdivision to the east where there was none before. So now we're treating and, and, uh, removing a lot of sedimentation and phosphorus and, and, uh, and other chemicals from, from the soil that, that, and the sediment that comes through that whole area that there wasn't done before. So that just helps clean up the river. So, and we're also, um, uh, lowering the, utilizing the, uh, the good infiltration capacity at this location too, where there's a good sand. So we're dropping the normal, using the, the sand to suck the, uh, the water down a little bit to create more of a, a, a better, faster way to get the water out from that, from that neighborhood. Right now, it just kinda flows through there, fills up, and then flows out. So we're just trying to create, create a better channel for that. Um, and allow, allow that to happen.
Landscaping and fence.
Oh, yeah. And, and the fencing, the fencing that we, we had, uh, I had mentioned that is, is along that, north of building two, uh, we're gonna provide the fencing for the home at seven four three Lund. And she had, she had, uh, she was one of the, uh, the residents that actually had spoke at the public, public meeting. So that is, that's one item there. So we're, we're actually gonna just, we had talked about just doing a breakup fence and, and trees, but the grade, the grade drops down. I didn't think that would be beneficial for, for them. So it's, it's gonna be a solid fence with, you know, a maintenance strip on our side and then trees on their side. So, yeah, and as far as, um, uh, I believe Rob had brought up, from the planning commission meeting, had brought up lighting. And we're, we're providing lighting at appropriate locations at the entrance, at the intersection, and at the, at the southern, uh, location of the, uh, the hammerhead. So there's, and, and we're just looking at some, uh, LED downlights that will offer up some safety for the residents. So, and then we'll, we'll pick up additional light. There'll be additional lighting off of each of the doors that'll provide some. But the idea is to make it residential and not commercial. So, I mean, it's really just to create a nice, nice, um, feel for that. And having, having the access and, and the, um, emergency access out to QuickTrip actually creates a nice residential feel for this. It's quiet cul-de-sac essentially. So I think, you know, having kids out, being able to play on that road and keep them contained here. And then they'll have good access to that park behind them too. So, they could, yeah. So it'd be a good, but a good scenario. And it, and then I guess we haven't talked about, we, we do have a, um, a placeholder for a playground for the, for the residents. So we would, it would provide some type of structure there for them.
Where is that located on the map?
That's just, uh, north of building two, right at the intersection there. And, uh, if you look at, um, it's, no, just north of that garage.
In between building two and the garage units?
No, north, north of that garage unit. Yeah, north of the garage unit. It's, it actually is, it's labeled as playground area. If you go to sheet C five, it shows up a little bit cleaner. They're a little more expanded. You can see there.
It'll be mostly like a little cotlock and we'll have some fencing in there too to contain them.
It's one area that I can actually create a flat, nice area. Otherwise, this, this site is just all hills. So it's, uh.
Are these units allowing animals? Dogs, cats?
I don't.
No. Okay. So no dog park necessary?
If, that's kind of a sticky wicket. I mean, if there is a, if they have a letter from a doctor.
Companion animals.
Truly. So are you finished?
I believe so. Any questions from here?
Um, so how many units total?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. How many parking spaces dedicated?
Seventy.
So two, basically two per.
And actually, we, we proved out more than that because we do have parking in front of each of the townhome units up on the north end. So there's, there's more than adequate parking.
Okay. Thanks.
Todd, can you just talk about the emergency access in between?
Yes, yeah.
Of the collapsible.
Yeah, so, so the, I've done this on a number of projects where, where similar situations. So we're creating a, a twelve-foot path essentially between us and QuickTrip. And to prevent any cars from driving through that, we're putting up collapsible, uh, bollards. So they've got a, a shear pin at the bottom, base of them. They're, they're actually anchored in the ground. They got a shear pin at the bottom of them. Fire trucks can just drive right over top of them. And they shear off the, those pins, they drop, and they can get access, so.
And that's right by, uh, just north of building one?
Correct, yeah. Right at the, right at the end of the cul-de-sac there. So it's, it's identified, or the, uh, hammerhead there. So it's south of that pond.
Yeah.
And just, it just extends over. And the location, that may adjust a little bit based on how we want those pedestrians and how that traffic can enter. And that was, uh, partially the reasons for expanding that into that hammerhead as well.
So pedestrians can walk across that strip too?
Yeah, that's the idea. Is that, you know, they, so we're, we're thinking that every resident here all go over and just walk over and get milk and groceries when they, when they need to, so.
I'll quickly close with just a few final comments. So if approved tonight, we're hoping to receive an approval, we will, uh, start construction, um, late August, September. And we've been very successful with spring rent-ups. This project will also have a website for residents so to, to go to, uh, for information on, on rental and what's available. So, all right?
The trees.
Yes.
So the trees that are going in, um, anywhere near the curb and gutter system are those trees. What'd you call those trees before?
Boulevard trees?
Yeah, we're, for our boulevard, for the projects coming, uh, on thirty-five in twenty twenty-one, we were, we were able to find out that there are trees that will not go down and wreck our sewer system.
Okay.
So, and Kevin's aware of what kind of trees those are.
Please plant those.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we do have a landscape plan identified. And we're staying outside of the corridor of the easements. So, so they won't have, and, and we're planting mostly spruce, spruce. And we do have some deciduous down at the bottom, but we can, we can make sure that they're.
That's for the buffer on the east side.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not.
On the west side too, because we're, we're trying to buffer from the traffic from thirty-five and, uh, and then buffer for the residents on the east side as well. So we're, it's kinda two-fold there. So, but there are, um, there's plantings that we're, we're just basically trying to reforest what was, what will be removed, so.
Thank you for your time.
I, I'm sorry. I'm always nervous for putting houses close to commercials. So are you guys informing your clients that they could hear a truck coming into QuickTrip? Or do they know that? Because when you're this close, it's gonna be them making noise or dropping off stuff. So I'm always nervous about stuff like this. So I'm always nervous about stuff like this.
All, all the residents will be informed that there will be a QuickTrip there. And they all know, they'll know that going in. And it's a, it, we have our main offices right across from one of their busiest QuickTrips. And all of our residents, because we, our office is below and they love it. They just love it, so.
Good question though, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions, anybody? Okay, I guess we need a motion in a second to. Thank you, Mark.
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. I think we did a road call on that, so Tim?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you, unanimous vote for the conditional use of yard companies. Mike, the last one you've got, we'll cut you loose.
This one is exciting.
All could be.
Another public hearing, nobody spoke from the public. It's about a zoning change and, and it probably came up because on this previous one you just voted on, most of the land is, is zoned RM2. On the south part, it's, it's commercial three, general. And there is a grandfathered non-conforming mini storage place there. And originally, they had asked about putting in a mini storage, but it's not zoned for it. And so we looked at possibly changing the zoning of the C3 area to allow mini storage. Talked about it a little bit, didn't see harm one way or the other, but now they're not planning on doing it. My understanding is, we did, we did vote to, to do that, but there's, it can go either way or it doesn't need to be done now.
Yeah, no, it was add a conditional use or not.
On condition, not a permitted use, yeah.
Yeah, my question is how excited are you guys to have the jury to, to go ahead with putting storage? Is this a deal breaker or is this a?
Do you want me to vote?
Uh, if you would, yeah, that, because I know there's been a lot of discussion about changing codes and ordinances.
So, Paul Gerard, La Crosse, Wisconsin. We, we would vote in favor of a conditional use to allow us to build a second locker because we feel a lot of our residents will have a boat, will have a, they could have a little camper, they could have an ATV. We would like the ability to build a second storage unit on the facility, on that parcel.
So would be considered like a garage then, rather than storage?
No, it'd be a storage locker.
Okay.
They don't need the zoning change in the garage.
Hi, everyone, Peter Gerard, La Crosse, Wisconsin. It's actually on a separate parcel. Okay, so we're talking obviously a separate parcel to, on the extreme south, south end of where, of what we just presented. And Paul's right, I'll echo his comments. A lot of the residents will, will want, everyone has toys. And some of these toys are rather expensive, so they don't want to leave them outside and put them in a garage. And we would want the right to build another mini warehouse, basically.
On that parcel?
Yeah.
Storage warehouses and multiple storage warehouses.
There's twenty there now, we would build twenty to twenty-four. We might build a larger one, we might build some smaller ones. Todd, what did you have scaled, was it about twenty, twenty storage locker? Twenty-two?
Okay, well, I know one of the biggest concerns we have is that, you know, I mean, we've got a huge storage complex, you know, going in down in the shopyards. And if we, you know, would make this, you know, change, then every C3 that we have could be turned, you know, they could say, all right, it's a conditional use, we're gonna put storage sheds up and all these other properties. And we don't want to be turned into North Hudson storage shed. So I'm just, I was just, that's why I was just kind of wondering what the, you know, I, I understand a deal for a garage would be, I mean, that'd be fantastic, but, you know, but it is a separate parcel, so we can, I'm just trying to get an information, you know. I, I, I think I brought this up a little bit too, because we were originally looking at rezoning. I'm like, that's not a, no, we want to rezone this to industrial. So the, the thought was to put a zoning tax amendment in there that would allow for this in this zoning district. But the, if you want to put an additional restriction on it, then allow us a conditional use for a parcel with an existing storage, uh, storage unit. So then, so then you end up having, so there's no other parcels in the town that, that have that condition. So then it's the only, that's the only parcel that you could actually put one on, so. I mean, so it's like, it's, so it's a finite. So it nails what we want, but it, it restricts everybody else for not even allowing it to happen. So that was, that was one thought I had that if the board were to allow that to happen, then we could, we could define it just for this parcel essentially.
The way this is worded, we're changing all C2 to allow, or C3 to allow.
Well, it, the potential would be there.
The potential, if you did it, it would.
Is there another way to get there?
That's what he was just saying.
Right, so I'm saying, you could amend that to say that any existing part, any existing B3 parcel with an existing storage locker could come forward with a conditional use permit.
I could, I would not, I just personally would not before that big of a change, but I'm not opposed to what they're trying to get.
So I mean, that, this is one way to handle it and really restrict everything else. Yeah, with the extra. I, I see the, the attorney's wheels turning. Let's go, Mark, Mark had a question?
Oh, I, no, I, well, for Melissa, that's okay, no, go ahead.
No, ask your question, I'm not sure if you can do a variance in this situation because it's.
No, this is its only change.
You couldn't, a variance wouldn't apply to it.
Is there possibility we can table this, so can we search this a bit further and see if there's any additional options? I mean, does it have to be decided tonight?
I don't think this does.
This particular part of it probably would be tabled.
I mean, this is the ordinance change, the zoning change.
All right, yeah, let's look into, we'll, we'll look into the word, you know, I mean, the language change, you know, if we can.
Yeah.
If we can just, yeah, if we can, you know.
I, I think that, that would solve everybody's issue because it's an existing non-conforming use. They'll need to upgrade what they've got there and it should be upgraded.
Yeah.
I don't think you can even do that.
I don't think you have to worry. I don't think it's a question of whether or not anybody's against doing what you're proposing. It's just a matter of.
Yeah, how we, how we.
Right now, not right now, we can sit here for a number and talk.
All right. Well, we can, we can, we can work with the attorney.
Yeah, no, I think we'll, we'll table this until, you know, next month to, in order to be able, you know, to, you know, wordsmith it to.
Right.
To make sure that.
The wordsmith, yeah.
Do we come back to planning or council?
Well, I think the.
Planning are approved, a less restrictive version. Yeah, they approved a less restrictive version, adding additional layer.
Yes, and we just go.
The board needs to determine this part.
Thank you.
We'll do that. Okay, so on the table. And that's all the votes for the planning commission. So Mike, thank you very much.
Yep.
We do definitely appreciate all the work the planning commission did on this. I know it was a huge packet and it was really difficult to get it all digested in the short, between the, when we get the packets and when you guys had your meeting and stuff like that. But that's, you know, as everybody's trying to get information in, that was the reason that it was, it was slower.
This planning commission you put together, we have a very diverse group of people with lots of strengths and so it helps a lot.
Yeah, no, that's great, no, we really appreciate the work you guys have done. Okay. Yeah, you can run away if, if you guys want to sit around, you can certainly sit around if you, you know.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure you got places to go and things to do and the long drive back home or whatever, so.
Thanks, guys.
Much appreciated, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
You can take those.
Yeah, we got them all in our package and stuff, that's good. Those had some fan to have those things redone. Okay, we're settled down here a little bit.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, item ten, personnel and finance committee recommendations, claims, parole requested.
Stand, man moved to approve the June nine, two thousand eighteen non-recurring claims of eighteen thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Thank you, Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy, is there any comments, questions? Hearing none, it's a spending, so Kathy?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
You, uh, next item was EMS services, this was gonna be discussion only. Uh, we're still looking at, there, there's some, you know, more information coming, so I'm, I'm going to table this for discussion only. And it was to make everyone aware that in September, we're under contract with the Hudson and that we have to make yea or nay decision on, on staying with their services. As everyone pretty much knows, we approached them with a more equitable, we thought, a fair way to pay for the EMS services and, uh, they did not, Hudson Council did not approve that, although I've heard that they might be looking at that again. But there's more information, but we will have a public hearing. We want to make sure, or Paul, you want to make sure that, that we know, if, you know, because the village is not required by state statute to be under contract. They will be cer, if you call nine-one-one, they are required to respond. And then, you know, like the town of Warren has a similar deal where if, if we respond, they just get charged, an extra, the person making the call gets charged for the whole bill, not that in the village, or the town of Warren isn't paying anything. But we're, we're still working on that, but we want to keep it up in front of everybody so you can, you know, to let people know we will have, you know, best service, but it, just under a possible different contract. And like I said, we will have, you know, a public meeting so people can talk about it. But we want more information on that and, and we will look at that next month. We've got a couple of months to go. Item eleven, public works committee recommendations, chair update.
Um, just a cup, just a reminder that, see, there's some things we are always discussing, the flushable wipes. We want to remind folks that are watching that flushable wipes might flush, but they harm our sewer system and cost us all additional money. And secondly, the ATV thing came back to public works. ATV's on North Hudson Street, so we're looking at, I'm looking at that issue next month as well. And then we had two items to bring forward, or three, the, or two items, revised confined space policy. We're looking for approval on that. And let me make a motion first, motion to approve our revised confined space policy to allow entry into confined spaces by trained village and contracted employees.
Second.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? Do you want to give background on the policy change?
Well, it's all in the packet, anybody have any questions about it? I mean, Patrick has done confined space in his past. He has worked with Melissa to make sure we've got a good policy now in place, which is in your packet. And she is going to crack the whip and make sure they follow that policy.
Well, I'll, I'll be whip-cracking too, because I used to do that for, that was, used to be part of my purview of my previous life.
We, we believe it will save the village a good amount of money. Maybe get the chief an extra vest here and there.
Okay, uh, so, uh, any other questions or discussion on the confined space policy? Uh, is the policy issued, Tim?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Steve, right?
All right, um, second item we had to bring forward was a motion to recommend slash approve ESS Brothers and Sons to flex seal repaired catch basins and seal any additional basins with a price not to exceed seven thousand.
Second.
Thank you, thank.
So in, to be clear, the, the flex seal's first going to go on the, the areas that we've repaired, rebuilt. We're gonna seal them after, after we've rebuilt them to keep them as nice and long as possible. And then we'll seal additional basins that are, are worse ones basically. With the additional money that's left and all of the, the seven thousand is, is what basically we'll have left in our budget, right, for these projects.
The seven thousand is what he wants to use out of.
Oh, you're using seven, only seven, out of that fund?
Right.
Yep, we discussed that.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, any other, any questions for me?
So the motion is not to exceed the seven thousand?
Right.
Okay, well, hearing no questions, Kathy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And item D, salt shed.
Okay, and in your packet, there's a picture of this on the salt shed. And Patrick, do you want to step up and talk about this?
Yeah, and I'll make it real short, I just want to get a feeling from the board on the placement of the shed.
If you look at your packet, I've got a green line that shows where our existing fencing is at. I made a dotted line to where we, is proposed, where we'd extend that west fence out. Originally, I was given reason to believe that we would, we would just keep, when we built the salt shed, we would put it up to keep it in line with the three buil, or the two buildings that are already there. And then upon asking questions of other people who, who built salt sheds and whatnot and thinking about different things and scenarios that could happen, I would like to, if I can, just draw a little, just to show you.
It's like Pictionary.
Oh, sorry. These are, these are the, the two buildings, I know, just bear with me. The two buildings that we have, this is the fencing, you know, this is where our gate is, right there. There's, here's our public access. Originally, we were gonna put the building up here, the salt shed. I, just for ease, I'm thinking to put the building down here, so it would be, my thought is the trucks would turn around out here. I know we don't have a lot of trucks, but they would turn around out here. We've got a decent-sized parking lot, they could back in, dump, and just take right off and go. If they came in through this way, they'd come up here, we have just class five. I know it's compacted well and all that stuff, but those trucks are heavy, they carry a lot of salt. They'd be doing all their turning and trying to jockey in here. I just see issues with tearing that up, it'd just be more work that we don't, we don't need. So I just would like to get a feeling from the board if, if everybody's dead set that we put the salt shed up here and keep it in line with all the other buildings or if anyone would be opposed to placing the salt shed in a different spot. That's really all I, all I'm asking is just to get a, get a feeling from everyone.
I think it makes good sense what you're trying to do, I mean, I don't know, for efficiency standpoint, anybody else?
I think, I like it this way too, because looking at the picture, we don't have to do anything with that fence right now until we get the particulars. If that, if that shed would go there, you wouldn't have to change that fence, correct?
Well.
Yeah, I mean, now.
I, no, I wouldn't have to, what, what I could do is what we can do because.
Over here?
Okay, this is the exist, I'm sorry.
This is the, this is the existing fence right here. So, you know, obviously, we would come out to, to incorporate the fifty-five or fifty feet or whatever further that we now own. So we don't have a lot of room in here, so what I would do is just build, build it like right here and then we try, I, I guess I would work with the contractors and stuff, if we put a gate in there or something, just so that, just so that people, because we have actually had some problems with people coming and grabbing a pailful of salt or whatever, you know. So I, I want to alleviate that, so we'd possibly put a gate in there and make it so that they wouldn't have access unless we had a key.
So you're not gonna move the fence, you're just gonna extend the salt shed back to behind the kind of the fence and shoot it out like that?
Yeah. Or, you know, like I say, it's, that's just my idea.
Show where the salt shed actually would go.
The salt shed, okay, the salt shed, I'm sorry, yeah, it wouldn't go up there. So the salt shed originally would go up here.
And would be in line with our other two buildings?
And would be in line with the other two buildings. And then if we did that up there, I just, I did, I've had past truck driving experience. We have a little area, a little ru, extra room up here. So if we move this another five feet that way, it would help a great deal with trucks coming in and having to back up and, and whatnot. I mean, we can also do that as an option. I'm not opposed to that at all, like I said, I'm just trying to. Um, I'm not opposed to that at all. Like I said, I'm just trying to get a feel for what everybody, what everybody wants before we.
If we put, put it in the upper left and keep it in line with the other buildings, that means we've gotta go out fifty feet and we have to put class five?
Yeah.
You know, basically, we classify that hole.
Yeah, this hole, this whole area.
The other thing about it is, um, we have an agreement with the, uh, person we bought this from that they have access on your map to this area, to use this area up and to, up, all the way up to that proposed fence line um, for another two years, two, two plus years, I think. Is that right? So we were trying to think of how to avoid extending the fence and then having to go back and redo the fence again to save money. We didn't want to keep moving the fence. So there was a question about, well, maybe we could fence the whole thing in. Uh, technically, we own it, but we're allowing someone to use it for two plus more years, so we'd have to provide a gate, which is not cheap. If we did that, we talked about coming in through, uh, the, the Zappas to get back into this place, so we didn't have to move our fence. But, you know, that, and that's another possibility. And, you know, basically what Patrick is asking, you know, these are our options. And he's asking, he's saying he'd rather just do the one right, right down here. That's his request.
So where are the setbacks, side yard setbacks on that?
I can't hear you.
Side yard setbacks. Where do it setback, how far off the property line are you gonna be with that salt shed?
With this one?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm, I haven't ventured that yet, so, um, I would assume we have to be at least ten, a minimum of ten feet. I think, I think they've got extra up here from.
The only reason I'm asking is if it, it, the, the driveway thing, with all due respect, that the, the subsoils are good there, tandem truck can roll in there. The only time it might be tough is in the spring, if there's frost and it's gonna be. So I'm not too worried about a truck backing in to your spot in line with the buildings. I guess I would lean more towards your, your choice of going south, simply because if we ever may want to do another building or something next to it, we don't have to hop skip over a salt shed. And since it's kind of corrosive stuff, and what kind of structure is it gonna be?
Uh, it'll be the, the fabric, like a hoop, you know, with trusses.
Not the timber?
No, it's gonna have cement sides. I mean, that's where we're going so far, nothing's been approved, but.
Okay.
That's, that's where we're leaning toward.
Yeah, I, I, I could see conceptually having it a little more isolated from the other stuff. Like I said, if you keep that line clean, it might sound like a nice idea to keep that stuff in line, but you never know if some might have to, if we have to increase a building or put another building up, then we can go right down that line.
Yeah.
So I guess I would opt for the, your, um, southern position.
Yeah, this is discussion only, so if you feel free and so, you know, I mean, to, you know, and you just looking.
Yeah, I just want to get opinions.
I wouldn't get in a fistfight over it, but I mean, it's.
Okay.
You know.
I, I think that the straight in, the straight out shot, I mean, is better, you know, to me, I mean, that makes more sense.
Either of these two solutions cost less.
Well, I guess right now, yes. You know, this, this would cost us less right now.
I'm not sure what you guys have discussed, but you don't, you know, hopefully this is, provides for our needs for a few years and if you're.
It's just the fence thing. It's the fence thing.
Yeah, I know, well, I, I.
I hate taking, you know, putting in a short-term fence for two plus years and having to change it.
I don't disagree, but I wouldn't shorten, I would look at the long-term application of what you're doing there and not short-change that because of a fence. You know what I mean? Cause that's gonna be there a lot longer.
Right, agreed.
Theoretically.
And when you were talking about setbacks, you mean from the south, from?
From the other property, yeah, I haven't explored that yet, I guess I'll.
It might be a zero. I don't know if commercial zero side yard setback or not.
You'll let it go?
Not a big deal, that is, that, that was an issue.
Public work.
Okay.
How big a structure?
Thirty-five by fifty-five. But it'll be, it'll be kinda, it'll be somewhat tall.
Yeah.
Um, cause it'll, I wanted to, um, or I would like to extend it up high enough, because the trucks that are gonna be delivering salt or the Olson carriers, you've probably seen them, they got the truck and trailer or whatever and, and dump.
Yeah.
Just to accommodate them, because.
You're gonna put a building up high enough to accommodate an end dump?
No, 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 no. To, to get them in as far as I can, I'm accommodating myself, because what we have to push that up is a skid steer.
Okay.
So I don't want stuff that I've gotta push for fifty, that, that's what I'm trying to.
This is not a retractable structure, is it, with the?
No.
With the, no, the type of material you're using?
No, no, it wouldn't be, so.
Okay, any other questions, your candidates? Everybody kinda seems okay with the not in line type of thing?
Yeah, we'll go back to public works.
Yeah, no, I will, I just, like I said.
No, that's, uh, that's good.
There was just some discussion about keeping the buildings all in a row at one point, but I liked Mark's comment about, well, what if we want another building? Then we gotta hop skip that, skip that somewhere down the road, that salt shed, so, good point.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item thirteen, public welfare committee, Kirk?
Uh, we did not meet.
Did not meet, okay. Item fourteen, park board recommendations, chair?
We do have something. Kind of exhilarating. We're gonna host a movie, Finding Nemo, in the Pepperfest Park. Um, sunset right now is eight fifty-four, so we're hoping to launch at nine. So I guess I need a motion to extend hours for the parks from eight AM to eleven thirty PM in Pepperfest Park, Wednesday, June thirteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Okay, um, I would like to entertain a possible amendment to the motion. Uh, you know, we're extending the hours to accommodate the movie. Uh, there's a, last year, there was a couple of families that apparently were down, uh, wanted to watch fireworks from, uh, either Brown's Beach or Fairlanding. And, uh, our parks close at nine and they were told that they can't be in there after nine. So my, I would like to amend to extend the hours on Sunday, July, uh, first, uh, for Fairlanding and Brown's Beach that they could extend so that people could watch the fireworks from there and they don't have to go put up with the traffic downtown, so.
Oh, absolutely. And I, I remember that they were not happy campers and I understand. They weren't doing anything illegal, but they were technically on.
Yeah, they were in the park and stuff and that, and the Jeep then, it's, uh, it's good.
Doing their job there, right?
I'll move, uh, to include the amendment, Stan.
Probably should pick an end time.
End times, okay, uh, ten thirty?
For us to enforce it, we have to.
All right, we got eleven thirty?
We got what?
Well, the first, our, my motion's for eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty, uh.
And the fireworks.
That would be, I mean, to keep it simple, eleven thirty would work.
Right, that's what I was saying.
And, you know, cause that's a, then they wouldn't have to run right out of there. But, uh, yeah, no, that, at eleven thirty, that would, uh, that works.
I would also like to add that we will be having free popcorn and free sodas, so if anyone wants to show up, um, that would be awesome. And then our goal is for the next one, if this goes well, to, uh, start selling stuff there to try to make some money for the parks.
Excellent.
So is it on the website? I'm wondering how we're promoting it.
Uh, well, our suggestion was, I know Cozy Corner's gonna put it on their sign, I talked to Lee, I'm pretty sure he is, and I'm also gonna talk to Brad, but I would love for it to be on the website as well. Let's talk to designer.
I'm not sure on the selling food items, but I thought they talked about doing a free will.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, yeah, so, so.
Okay.
We're starting out with, it's all us donating it and then hopefully people will.
But people donate money for it?
Yes.
Yeah, you could put out free will donation.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, great, okay.
So with that, and I'm sorry to add to the motion, but I know you're planning on doing this July and August as well, so can the motion?
Do it for three. Do it for three months.
It'd be the, it's the third one.
For the movie in the park, the July and August, or if they have to come back separate?
We added Brown's Beach and.
I know, it's like, it's two, it's, it should be two different motions.
And then I'll do another motion for the next one. Question mark?
It's not on the agenda for the fourth of July one, is it?
The, it's not on the.
I don't even know if we can. Cause all Kirk's motion is for Pepperfest, here, you're not needing to go to Brown's Beach and Fairlanding.
You know, I'm trying to get the hours.
Get, Kenny?
I think the agenda item, and then I'll defer to the attorney, but I think that we're and in there, that's a request for extended park hours being.
Yes.
So we can make it, doesn't specify which park.
Let's make it enrolled immediately.
Okay.
Let's make it enrolled.
Okay, uh. Any other discussion?
Well, in, I don't think we would need July, because we meet the third, and July would be the eighteenth, so I can still do it then for the next one.
Yeah, and see how this first one goes.
Right.
So we could do the first one with the and.
Yes, and then that cleans it up a little.
For the next one, we could add.
For the next, you know, movies, okay? And all, we've got the motion, the second, an amendment, and a second.
Yeah, so you'd vote in the amendment.
Extend park hours.
So you'd vote in the amendment first and then you go to the main.
Brown's Beach and Pepperfest Park, extend the hours to be open till eleven thirty.
Yep, and then, so Pepperfest Park would be the, uh, June thirteenth and then the beaches would be July fourth.
July first.
First, sorry.
Yeah. Okay, we got all that? Jess, you got it?
Got it.
All right.
We're at an hour, we're at an hour.
Yeah, nobody, nobody's used to this, you know, it's like, okay, uh, so, uh, let's see, that's, uh, all in favor of the amendment? And then the motion, saying, I, I, opposed, unanimous, thank you. Uh, one thing that has brought to my attention, I missed public safety committee recommendations. Mark, you got it?
Um, Stan, we did meet, but you already covered our one action item.
All right, thank you, and, well, I'll be darned. Uh, I guess we're, uh, adjourned at eight twenty-two PM. Thank you, everyone.